Ben is. Okay, Ben is joining us from Disneyland, I believe, so that's the way to hold a city council meeting. So we will now.
He paid over $100 to attend this meeting.
Yeah, I know.
But he can be waiting in line and the meeting will get over before he gets to the front of the line.
Well.
That's how we do it.
Try to extend the length as long as we can, just to deprive him as much fun as we can. Right, right, Ben?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate you.
All right. So we'll begin with the public hearing portion. We would like to extend a welcome to our friends and neighbors to the -- I actually had to look this up, because I grew up in the Salt Lake Valley, so to me, it seems like you should be to the south, but you're actually to the west. So our friends to the west, from Elk Ridge, we appreciate you being here. So we'll call the meeting to order, and the public hearing portion, we will invite public comment to be heard. One thing I talked to our planning commission chair, Wayne Franson, about, item three, the proposed changes to City Code 10-45D, that will be impacted by another ordinance that we will be working on, so we're going to table that, so we won't be having public hearing on that particular item. But with respect to the first item, City Code 10-11-8B-1E, fences and hedges, a proposed new ordinance that would read, "Fences or hedges taller than 42 inches shall not be located less than 30 feet from a property line abutting a tree," or, excuse me, "a street," can run along the side or rear property lines, as long as the fence does not extend beyond the front plane of the residence. So do we have anybody here that would care to weigh in on that?
Long packet.
And Jody, do we have anybody over Zoom that has a raised hand? Then, moving on to item two, amending City Code 10.6, the composition of the appeal authority. I do note that Tannen and Megan Fugia did send a comment regarding this ordinance change. It will be included with the minutes. We will not be reading it aloud here in this meeting. Do we have anybody here that would like to express any public comment concerning that proposed change? All right. Well, there being no public comment, we will close the public hearing and call to order the work session of our city council. So, jumping right ahead, item four is our joint discussion with our colleagues from Elk Ridge. So we had a couple of people join. I don't know that -- are you with Elk Ridge?
No.
Okay, well, I've met everybody, but I don't know that I've met you. Okay, so you and I met at the training, too. Okay, nice to see you again, Mayor. So I know that one of the sort of, well, not the purposes of our getting together, but one of the things that struck up our initial conversation that led to this gathering was the proposed annexation that involves Robert Nelson, who is here this evening, his property, and then there is also the Hyatts have a property, and there is a third property. Say, I'm sorry. Okay.
Two.
Two high properties, okay. All right, thank you. Okay, well, so, I mean, I would love to, if you, Mayor, or any of your council members or staff that are here, if you have any input regarding this, I know that when you and I spoke, it sounded as though there, as long as the properties weren't emptying out onto Lofer Canyon Road, that.
Yeah, so it's access and then any water sewer.
Zoom, thanks.
Boarded, huh? Now I gotta watch it.
I know.
We don't. Go ahead.
So, no, I think, so we've got the house on the corner of Lofer Canyon and 11-200 on the southeast corner, and then there's a property further south up the hill a little bit. And so, yeah, like I said, you know, as long as you're accessing those off Elk or off Woodland Hills streets, and then I'm assuming they're on well and septic right now?
Yeah.
Probably, okay. Okay, so, yeah, just, okay, so just as long as you've got, you know, if the septic fails and they have to hook up the sewer, just, I just want to make sure that everything runs through Woodland Hills, and there won't be any surprises in the future, so.
Is that that line? Payson.
Yeah, it all eventually goes to Payson, but, yeah, but I think Woodland Hills has their line and we have ours, so.
Yeah, my understanding is that all utilities will be addressed through our city.
Okay. Council, do you have any? You have more experience than I do.
Well, yeah, Jared Peterson, so I just think, as far as we're getting together on properties farther south of there, I mean, I think topography is going to play a big, big, big play into, I mean, obviously, with the sewer and the streets, I mean, you know, there's a ridge going up through there, and, I mean, if it, if it's a must that it needs to be serviced through Elk Ridge Utilities and stuff, it would make sense that that, you know, that portion of the property or the property would be, you know, annexed into Elk Ridge, and vice versa with, you know, Woodland Hills as they go up, you know, I mean, we're not looking to land grab or anything, I think it's just, you know, I mean, if, you know, the streets, you know, we don't want to get any, right now, we have one road that goes out to Glassland Golf Course. There's what, like 10 houses that are Payson, and we've, and the interlocal agreement for that was huge, I mean, it was just, you know, it was, it was a problem, and so we don't want to run any problems there. We want to kind of clean cut, so that, you know, the property or the annexation line goes between backyards, kind of, you know, and that way, so farther south as we go on up Lofer Canyon, as just properties get developed, that, you know, I think topography is going to pretty much define which city it ends up.
I agree with that.
And I just, I think that's the point that I've heard everybody else make, and.
We had somebody further south that you're referencing that came to us one time, but it never would work, because they're way downhill.
Yeah, yeah, so I think that just needs, I think that's the point, I mean, we'd have some drainage and stuff that comes from you guys that we kind of seem to address every year, and we don't want to, you know, muddy the waters anymore, it's just it's, I mean, if they're using our roads to get to their place, I think they ought to be in Elk Ridge, and same thing if they're using Woodland Hill roads to get in there, I mean, we're not going to try to, you know, do something, so that, I think the point that I want to make, and I think pretty much the city is, you know, that, so.
Oh, yeah, Robert. Robert, would you speak into the microphone?
I have some rough drafts here of the future proposal of what we want to do, and that does go into Elk Ridge, other, but years back, and then she's went right now, quite only annex as far as we.
And, and, and Robert, so, and what you're describing is not inconsistent with what was stated by Jared here.
They're coming first page. And subdivision, there.
Oh, yeah, we have that.
And on the south side, the property, they're showing making all the property. Put down their future potential property, you could that tie with the road that's way up. And then the boundary property. Right. This is on the front page. Turn over to the next page. It's kind of confusing, but maybe it makes sense. You can see what's kind of proposed there for Elk Ridge. That's on the property already in Elk Ridge. Pick up Nadine's property home. Nadine Olson is now home. If she decides to go for this, this is why we tell her, and she's going to go this, and set them a whole lot. They pick up one piece per property, there's a little triangle along the triangle that is side of the county. And one piece down in the place.
This is what we're talking about right now?
No, I was talking about this one.
Because it's so deep, come up on the canyon.
That E's property is here?
No, I believe these are the ones that's here.
Here.
That's, that's.
Thing proposed to us right now, that's this one, which is.
Yeah.
Where's the access off of?
It would be down, so we don't have to.
We're going to have to come down and go through his existing sub. These are like extending over.
Yeah, it's just a surprise taking of John.
Because I looked, I looked it up, and it's hard, because it's like.
Yeah.
But he's already built.
That's what his existing stuff that he's building.
This is horse, like horses. And so this is extending over. I, like I said, this is one of the things I did today, I was like, I need to figure this out and get an idea of where it's at. And this is that, this is that house that has the.
Is this the part that's currently in Elk Ridge, though?
No, none of it.
Why are we talking about this instead of just Elk Ridge?
Well, none of it's, none of this stuff.
This stuff, that they're trying to, that's what they're here to discuss.
Well, yes, not to hammer it exactly, it's just kind of forward thinking.
We're trying to combine into issues.
Yeah, so, I mean, this, what we, I mean, this is, there's no objection, so, but as far as this goes, this is just kind of a.
My brain is just linking back to, we're just talking about the annexation.
Right, no, no, this is just kind of like trying to make sure that we're all working on the same page.
The annexation would work, because eventually we'll have to go out.
This is, I think this is the house that has the, like, the whole warrant.
Yeah.
Rights.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure if you're still on the same subject or not.
Yeah, no, it's, it's kind of blended into a couple of different topics, but close, 80%.
How many hours a day are you spending on this right now?
On the annexation.
Stop being there.
Well, I was at the state of the county.
Oh, I was going to go to that, but I had another meeting. How did it go?
It was fine, it was interesting, I met the commissioners. Probably about 20 hours.
I'll take my, like, five for 10.
I had a meeting with the sheriff's office today, but I didn't get there, so I can't get all the way to get back to schedule.
Oh, yeah.
In time to get, so I was gonna, I talk with him all the time.
Honestly, you didn't, I mean, it was, it was interesting, and I'm glad I went, but it wasn't. The funny thing is, it seemed like it was primarily county employees that were there, because it was sort of like an employee appreciation, I mean, I was expecting it to be like the president addressing Congress, but.
Yeah, the state of the county.
Yeah, it was, it was good, though.
Good, good, good.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're all, we're all still friends? Perfect.
We haven't talked long enough.
All right, so I would, this gentleman here, I don't know, are you?
I have the junky corner.
I think it's a creative corner, and with the sculptures.
These are, these are.
Right.
Friend.
I love that, actually. You change it up every once in a while.
A few years ago, we had him and his wife as the grand marshal.
That's right.
For the Hills Day Parade, because of all of the, all of the things that, that Mr. Hyatt has done for our city through the years, and the help and the equipment and time and everything that he's given to the city, and we really appreciate, you even know that you have not been a resident of our city, how much you have helped Corbett.
Yeah. Well, we're glad you're coming over.
We'll keep you.
Yep.
That's right.
Yeah, he did. That was my boy Cory.
Yeah, Cory did some great work for us.
Yeah, that's, good, good neighbors, you guys.
All right, well, if, yeah, please. Right, and, and we have had that conversation, and it's certainly something that we understand would be the expectation, so, yeah. I mean, we haven't voted on it, obviously, but that is our understanding and the expectation, so. Well, thank you, Robert, for the information, and, and we appreciate, again, those of you from Elk Ridge coming and participating and.
Are we discussing anything else with them?
Well, no, you're welcome to stay, but as far as the annexation, yeah.
They all came, but I'm not sure if we heard everything they want to say. I mean, do you have anything else that you want us to know? Push the button, yeah.
All right, so, you know, the main thing here, this takes care of the north end of town, down there in Lofer Canyon, but I'd like to see us just get it in writing, have signatures to the paper, the rest of the way up to the Lofer Canyon Recreation Association. We've got areas that are in the county, we've got areas that are in your city and in our city that are right there, I know you've annexed in, and you have property that comes all the way down to the bottom, because that's your access road, it's your, your backup in case.
Emergency exit is what we call it.
Something that hits the fan, right? But I think that we need to, we owe it to ourselves and to the people that will replace every one of us at some point, to get this done and be, be done with it, I mean, we've been talking about it for 12 years.
Yeah, no, I think that that's very forward thinking, and, and I agree that that would bring a lot of value to, I mean, that's, that's what.
Well, it'll, it'll give staff direction, so when somebody comes in and they, they come in and talk to us, and we say, well, no, you need to go talk to Woodland Hills.
Yeah.
And then we don't end up with similar problems that some of our neighboring communities are experiencing right now with regards to power and other things, so.
Okay, no, yeah, point taken.
Let's do that.
Okay, anybody else from, from the Elk Ridge delegation? All right, Robert, you said you had another comment you wanted to make?
We're in the process of selling this home.
Yes? Cory's in the processes.
Okay, so just to be clear, so this is a property that is currently under consideration for annexation, you say will be utilizing the Lofer Canyon Road?
That's correct, it's the one that is second. It's this one.
Okay, and, and so, as far as the prospects of that access point being constructed, so you're saying that, I mean, is it an inevitability, or is it a question mark?
Well, in the case of Cory Hyatt's, right now, it's going to, it has to be that way. If they want to buy another lot behind them and then bring it out up on the new road we would be putting in in the future, if, and when I say "we," there's like four of us involved with it, so don't know for sure when that'll happen, and then also Mike Griffiths, we still have to enter that way until that subdivision goes in. Nadine Robins or Olson is using that road also, coming out now, but she's the one that's not involved with the annexation right now.
Okay, so how, how will that then impact, so utilities, it's still the same, utilities would still be serviced by the city of Woodland Hills, it would just be the road, or would that also impact utilities?
If they ever wanted to hook on the sewer, it probably would. If they're on septic tank right now, they are on, Mike Griffiths and Cory Hyatt, both of those are on Woodland Hills water.
Okay.
And the power is serviced by Strawberry or SESD, whatever it's called now, so it'd stay the same.
Okay, well, that, that's a little bit of a wrinkle, but.
Oh, you need to know it.
Yeah, no, I'm glad that, I'm glad that you spoke up, because I was under the impression that all access points would be through the city, and that all utilities would be through the city, so, well, there's something to chew on. Okay.
They didn't send the city amount showing the, what they're planning on doing, and then people buying the house are planning on buying that lot.
Okay.
But we don't know when that will happen.
And some of these lots are currently in Elk Ridge city boundaries, and some of them are in county, are they all that county? Okay, because I remember years ago, the county said, "We don't want any more islands," and so they have been pushing us to do this for a while, go one way or the other, and so, that's what I was remembering, that these were the island.
People went into the county, and the county kicked back and said, "No, because you're creating an island."
Right.
It had been where Will Fuzz Young, Richard, but like Olson's.
Yeah.
Griffiths, they didn't get the island.
Yep.
They didn't want that, because they weren't ready to.
They didn't want service.
Everybody's ready to play on safety.
Right, because the county doesn't want to have to service an island, but if we incorporate all of that, then they're usually happy to sign up.
Some of those issues have been worked out.
But these existing homes right now, they would, in the future, be accessed and serviced in Woodland Hills.
They have the possibility of being, being able to, however, on Cory Hyatt's case, that lot enters Woodland Hills Drive right now, and they have to buy an additional lot to get over to the new road that'll be going in.
I don't know about the depth, if they'd be able to or not.
There's a possibility they'd have to come out onto Lofer Canyon Road.
There's sewer line in that road.
Yes, you do, I put it in. Yeah. We installed it all the way over to where you hooked on the Salem City, and then Payson comes in and puts it right in the side of it.
Bonus.
I need to work it out. I don't want to pull up, they're trying to sell their house now for what it is.
Right.
Got to do an intercity agreement, like they were talking about, and it becomes.
Yeah, I mean, let's, let's get a document that says if, and, when.
Right.
I think we should have a timeframe and say, you know, within a year of speed, hopefully they get the kills, you know.
Especially with these.
Yeah.
And with the utilities, it seems to me they're serviced by the same people, it would just be transferring city boundaries, but the connections would still be there.
Yeah, one of the things we have to work out with Payson, that connection is part of our number of connections we've contractually agreed to with Payson. So, you know, if we add another one in there, it's taking someone else's in our city unless we're working with Payson, where they say, "Yeah, we're okay with it, we know that's really coming from the people," but we're.
Yeah.
We're going to make the belt, sort of power belt.
Yeah, we don't want, we should be able to figure that out.
Now, so with respect to our current, like, tonight, we're going to be voting on this particular annexation, does anything that you've heard tonight change your position with respect to that? I mean, as far as I'm concerned, we would like to forge ahead and, and proceed as, as planned, you know, there obviously is some additional information, but.
The point is that they need to come on some discussion.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
Cory is in our vote tonight, his property.
I think we need, I think we need some timeframe that is going to be accessed off Woodland Hills Road within a year.
Right, but I, so we can arrange that, or we can coordinate that separately, or discuss that separately? Okay, yeah, no, I.
That needs to be a part of the agreement.
Access, utilities.
We need a transition agreement, but we don't want that to be a permanent solution.
Fair enough, okay.
He mentioned, "Within a year," have you ever tried to get anything approved through the city? It takes a lot longer than that.
Yeah, and, and we will make sure that our timelines are grounded in possibilities, yeah. Okay.
Anything, construction or building?
Oh, well.
Four to five years.
But we can plan it out, I mean, we can, we can map it out, so.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Oh, we need the mic. It's on the side of Nelson. Who is going to commit to drawing up the interlocal agreement, just so we get that nailed down? Since it's coming to us, but I don't know.
Yeah, well.
We will send it back and forth.
Do we have to have an answer tonight? Because, I mean, where we, yeah, okay.
Do we, Jody?
I bet Jody does.
We had a significant turnover present. Where our original.
Boundary agreement.
Our boundary line agreement. I'm not asking if the Hyatts or Olson. Oh, I remember in 2007, they were discussing that with LEI and, yeah, the cities and stuff, and you want me to come in then, really like what we wanted to do, and I told them, kind of, according to Mary, like, I mean, it had, they didn't want to do anything, so we didn't want to lay that out, so they kind of, that whole area, we just kind of left them the whole way. At one point in time, we had a agreement that was signed by Woodland Hills and was on the desk of the mayor.
Well, why don't we use that as a starting point, then? So that, I think, to your.
If we can find a document.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense.
Really not too different from what it is.
With this.
Okay, yeah, so what I think we can fairly commit to is that we will dig and, and try to locate that, and then have a starting draft that we can, hopefully, it will get us close.
It was, I mean, 2007, it was, it wasn't 70.
Because I thought something that was drawn in 2000.
I'll bet that's what it was, because that was right after Mayor Dunn left office, and Mayor Ruth came in, and he was mayor for about eight, 10 months, and said, "It's his desk," and we got the mayor, and that lost itself. That's probably it.
That's probably it.
We started the process and we're getting that drawn up about 2007, and the congressman passed the thought.
Okay. Well, we'll get what we have and we'll get it distributed. Great. Thank you. And again, you're welcome to stay, but.
Oh.
Okay. Thank you, thanks for coming, nice to meet all of you. You too. Uh, yeah. Okay.
That's our next thing on the work session.
Yeah, so the, the language, it would read fences or hedges taller than 42 inches shall not be located less than 30 feet from a property line. See, I, I've got to, yeah, wait, you have it, please, because this, I'm not sure I've got the correct language.
Senses or hedges taller than 42 inches shall not be located less than 30 feet from a property line abutting a street right-of-way and can run along the side or rear lot property lines as long as the fence does not extend beyond the front plane of the residence.
We understand that if they want to cross the back property, then go six foot high all the way to property, and then come down the road, except for 30 foot back, they have to be back 30 foot or back to the front plane of the house.
They can't, they can't put a fence in the front of the house.
Okay.
To pass the front plane.
Okay, the front plane of the house, it'd be six feet, however, when you get to the road, it's got to drop down 42 inches for 30 foot back.
Yes.
That's what I wanted to clarify, so if it is abutting, if a side street, say it's a side street, then it still has to have the 30-foot clear, setback.
Setback, correct.
Okay, on every, every.
Corner lot.
Yeah, everyone that it butts a street, okay, whether it's the front or back or side, or whichever way they have their house on their lot. Because that was my, one of my concerns was if it would obstruct view of a street, and I would want to make sure that that was, that was clear, that it had to be, there had to be a setback on the.
But it can be taller than 42 inches still, right?
But it has to be six, 30 feet back.
Yeah, I got that, but he.
Yes.
It could be six foot coming down parallel with the street.
Yeah.
When you get the intersection, it's got to be dropped down to 42.
No.
Nothing is going to be in front of, the front plane of the residence. Yep, no, no fence in, in, in the front plane of the residence, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
No, we're not, it's just saying anything 42 inches or taller has to abide by that setback.
Look, 42 inches does not obstruct the view, so it's allowed. But it can't be taller than 42 inches on the street or the front.
That's three and a half feet, so people can do those little, they can still do the cute little fences that kind of divide the yard, but they're not tall. Yeah.
All the way to the street, or 30 feet from the street?
Three, 30 feet from the street.
I'm in front of my house now, and I got a little fence going.
Yeah, just a little one between you and the neighbor.
Nothing beyond the front plane of the residence.
Well, you see those everywhere, though.
Right, those would be, have to be grandfathered in if they're already built.
Yeah.
There's a couple in town, not very many.
Every other city but our.
Well, there's a couple of people in our city who have the split.
And in Payson, they all do it, they all go all the way to the sidewalk.
But we don't have to worry about.
Outrule that, huh, okay.
Yeah, we need to have the 30-foot setback on a road because we have.
Well, I'm worried about from the front plane of the house to the side, or the street, or the sidewalk in their case.
Right.
No fence.
No fence in the front, from the front plane of the house up and then the side. And the other thing that I was concerned about is if it went all the way to the side, there's the right-of-way, and we're eventually putting in our trail system that goes in the right-of-way, and if they have a fence all the way to the street, then that obstructs that. So, not only for future maybe use in our right-of-way, but also for obstruction of view, we need to have that 30-foot setback, because a lot of people think their property goes to asphalt when it doesn't. And we would hate for people to start, we already have landscaping to the street, we don't want them to suddenly put a fence in the right-of-way. So the 30-foot back seems to be appropriate.
And while we're on the topic, why don't we just jump ahead to this? Any, any additional discussion that? Any additional discussion?
They're still talking about it.
I know, but.
So, I have a question for Wayne.
Hang on.
Yeah, one discussion at a time works way better than minutes.
But we gotta tell them that.
Jody's, Jody's a little nuts, describing this one.
Hey, Wayne and Robert. If you want to have the discussion as part of this, okay.
Make sure you turn on the microphone, too, when you go up to Robert.
Yeah, let's turn on that mic.
Sorry, you, you just have to be on mic. It doesn't help us, it just helps the people.
Yeah, okay.
My question on this, in most of the cities, we have it where it says setback to the house on the front.
Explain that.
As you, if you have a corner lot, we're coming down Summit Creek Drive.
Right.
And then you turn left on to another road. The house is facing north. Normally what we do in most cities is we bring the, we leave them the frontage in the front here. This is the house with the driveway.
Right.
So we would have, we'd have the frontage, most of the time we have it so that this fence comes straight across here, and then it can be six-foot fence here and here, then all the way across the back and down the side, and then 30 foot of the front. There's 30 foot of the front here, so then you, if the traffic comes down the road, you have vehicles here of the traffic coming down. If you actually have from the curb and gutter, you actually have 13-foot six to property that's there. My concern about doing this is it opens it up so much, they're not going to be able to have a yard.
I think what he's drawing there is legal, it's what we're saying. All the way to the front plane of the house is where your six-foot fence comes.
That's what I understood, the front plane, but as, as I was really talking back here.
Okay.
He said, no, it means that he means the side also.
If it's on the corner, it cannot be that way, it has to be a 30-foot setback on the road for clearance and right-of-way issues.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So this could still, what I'm proposing is we make this a six-foot fence across here, and it can be a six-foot fence up here. And then, and if they have anything, they normally say that there's a, they keep vision so that you can have vision from this road. The other intersecting road, keep this fence out or keep it below 36 inches or 42. You're saying this road, this fence here has to be 42 inches along that road?
Well, I think it's more than 30 foot, 30 foot, I'm just wondering if it's there, I don't know.
Wayne, can you clarify for us on that, if it, if the fence in the entire property on the, on the backside of the front plane of the house can only be 42, or can it be taller? I know that we, we changed it for gardenings and we changed it for sports courts to be able to be taller, but I don't remember us changing it for that back section.
If it's, if it's not on a street, it can be six foot tall.
Okay.
If the property borders a street, whether it's a front or side, then it has to have a 30-foot setback from the right-of-way.
But, but it can still be six foot if it's 30 feet back.
But, yes.
As long as it's behind the front.
Because that's the question.
Yes.
You got 14 feet between the curb and the fence if it goes on property. I just, I just know I'm going to have a bunch of homeowners that aren't going to be happy with this.
Right.
Because I understood it the other way, I understood it to the front of the property, it had to, as far as we could come on the corners, that gives you 43 feet.
It is six feet tall. It can be six feet tall.
Yeah, as long as it's behind the plane.
Right.
What he's saying is he doesn't like the 30-foot setback.
No, on the side.
No, he doesn't like the height.
I can see it being 30 foot back. But he's talking about 30 foot on the back and the side of the face of the other street.
Oh, it's on the corner, yeah.
But see, most of the time you keep that corner, so you can see through there, you have the, actually can have 43 feet between there so they can see the incoming traffic in that.
And I'm trying to think of our fencing materials. I know that for sports courts and, and gardens, we can have a vinyl coated chain link, but I don't think that we can have, I don't, I'm trying to remember back from my memory. What is it, Corbett, do you remember, what our fencing, or Wayne? I know that we, we, so when we're talking about see-through, I mean.
Yeah, so much of it has to be see-through if it's.
Right. But I still think that the 30, I still think the 30-foot setback when it's on a road. You know, that's your choice of buying that lot, knowing what the ordinance is.
Problem is, I understood it the other way. I mean, it's nothing to do with the idea of wanting to have a problem.
Because I think it's important for us to be consistent.
I don't see a 30-foot needed all the way around the street.
No, not around your whole thing, just on the streets.
Well, all.
But if you're on a corner, it's two sides, so you're losing a lot of your yard.
Well, you're already having the front, it already doesn't have it one, because it has to be the front plane of the house.
Right.
So it's just your side yard that would potentially be used, you know, as.
Well, I don't.
You see it all the time in other cities.
It's going all the way to the sidewalk in most cities, in a development like that with sidewalks, they fence right to the sidewalk.
No, but this is an ordinance for the whole city, not just for Robert's stuff. I mean, this is the whole city.
Well, we need to change that.
And I can see several places in the city where we wouldn't want a fence that close to the.
I agree with that, but when you have a sidewalk, to me, the rules change.
I thought we already decided for four seasons.
Why, why? Why would you have a 30 feet of property?
Just, just so we can have order in the meeting, so can we avoid the side discussions? Thank you.
Well, and, okay, so we've now kind of crossed into the area where we're now writing an ordinance in a meeting.
Right.
That's always a bad idea.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, if we don't have clarity on what we're doing, we should table this until we can get the clarity by doing, you know, either having the planning commission come and explain it to us in a work session, or at a meeting with us individually, whatever, but we shouldn't be writing ordinances in the meeting.
Right, well, and Wayne is here, so, I mean, I don't know why we couldn't accomplish that tonight. I mean, you know, Robert, I certainly can appreciate your concerns, you know, I, but Wayne, I mean, is that something that you care to address at this moment concerning?
This is our recommendation to the city council, if you don't like it, change it.
Right, because this is our work session, we're supposed to discuss it openly and publicly, so I think it's all right to discuss it, and then if we come to an agreement here, we can go forward, if we don't, then we table it.
The main emphasis on this was to move the fence line along the property line. Up to now, the fence line had to be five foot inside of the property line. So that was our goal, was to allow a fence to be put on the property line itself. So as we further talked about that, and looking at safety, traffic, et cetera, decided that on street-side property, that a fence had to be, it could still be along the property line, but it had to be set, excuse me, it had to be set back 30 feet from the road, road right-of-way for we felt safety concerns. Now, if you feel that that is not necessary, you can put it on the property line along, along the side where the road is. I don't think it's being debated about the front plane, that seems to be accepted, the property, that the fence can't come forward of the front of the house, the front plane of the house. So that's where we started out with a fence along the property line. So the only issue then is, are we too far, is it, are we still within the margin of safety to allow it to be on the property line on the side of a house where a road is? Or if not, how far setback should it be? So that's, this was all a consensus of the planning commission, and you're free to change it if you think that there's.
In Payson City, it had to be a shorter fence if you were on a corner and you were on the road. The fence along the side of the road had to be shorter.
But how far back? The reason I say that is most cities.
It was on the property line.
But all the way to the, to the side property line?
Yeah, because we built one, I lived in Payson for 25 years. We built one, and my husband didn't check the ordinance, and he made it too tall, and he literally was three boards left, and the building inspector came and said, "That's lovely, now you have to take it down, and you can make it three and a half feet, and it can't be any taller."
At front of the plane of the house, right?
No, no, we're not talking about the front of the plane of the house, there's no fence in the front of the plane of the house. We're talking about the side next to the road.
On the side next to the road, it can be 42 inches tall.
Yeah.
So, we're talking about.
But that, you could go right to your property line.
That's correct.
I had residents contact me, a few of them who read this, and they agreed with the 30-feet setback.
So Dave, do you feel that your questions, I mean, disagreements notwithstanding, I mean, we don't all have to agree on this, but do you feel your questions have been addressed with?
So here's the thing, and it's, it's tough, but again, Woodland Hills is Woodland Hills for a reason. And I think, you know, fencing is already kind of one of those, ah, screechy kind of things. And so I think what we're trying to say is we don't want to have a Harvest Ridge kind of environment with fences like right there on the edge, and going down a road with fences right there is.
It's not Woodland Hills.
It's not Woodland Hills, it's not what we've been, so I'm fine with the ordinance as originally.
Okay, and then with respect to any of other council members, do you want more information? Do you feel like you've got sufficient information to make your decision?
I don't, but I'm, I'm a lone cat here, it's okay.
And what information do you feel you lack?
I just see, I just see cities, when sidewalks are involved, it's all changes. And I promise you, I drive down streets in Payson, and there are little fences that touch the sidewalk. Coming from the, the face of the house, looking front on at the front door, fence, it shortens and then comes right to the sidewalk. It might be a rail fence, it might be just a little thing, but, and some of them are solid even, they come right to the sidewalk. Because if you put a fence 30 feet from the sidewalk, imagine what's going to accumulate there from.
But those are lots that are.
It's going to be trashed.
Quarter acres, not a whole acre.
And you got to mow the grass, I mean, it's, to me.
Well, and those are more concerns with the nature of the ordinance, not the information concerning to, concerning.
Yeah, I want to hear Craig.
Yeah.
So, just keep in mind, too, we have two ordinances, one for R-119, which is the Summit Creek.
Right.
And one that's up here, if you want a good visual, the guys, the Mitchells are putting a fence in down on Summit Creek Drive. So he's behind the front plane of his house, which faces, what is it, Summer Breeze or Winter Breeze, one of the side roads. So, it's by front plane of the house, well, on Summit Creek, it touches the property line. It's not hampering when you come out of that cul-de-sac and look up, it's not hampering a view. It's a see-through fence, it'd give you guys a good visual on what it would look like. I want to go see that. What this would look like on a corner lot, and, I mean, I'm dealing with the Mitchells right now, and, because he's already got his posts in the ground. Yeah, so, yeah, it's, now the other one in Woodland Hills, that's the one that he's dealing with right now. And the only visual we got really is rough banks around the property line.
All right.
Just to share, Mitchell didn't get any permit at all to do anything, so they're in violation, we're starting a permit. Right now, the current requirement is five-foot setback.
No, not in 119, 119, you can go to the property line, but you have to be behind the front plane of the house. He's behind the front plane of the house, he's not behind his side plane. Right, it's, so. He kind of conforms, and he kind of got around it, but we're going to.
This ordinance is.
Yeah, except for he did not get a permit, but he's in the process of doing that right now, so.
Right.
Just to answer on that one of Mitchell's, I was in Kentucky when I heard he was putting a fence up. My son called me and told me, I got ahold of Mitchells and told him he needed to stop until I got a permit from you guys and approval from me on it, because my, my C.C.N.R. stated that he has to have approval from Woodland Hill City, and they'll approve it after they get approval from Woodland Hill City.
Yeah, no, and I don't think that anybody would hold you responsible for that, so I, but I just want to make sure that everyone feels like they've got the information that we can move on. Doral, I know that you feel that you don't.
Well, I'm concerned what Carrie just said, I'm with Craig, I think we have two different fence rules. One for those small wa.
One for those small wa, small lots and one for the rest of Woodland Hills.
That's what I think.
Am I wrong?
And this one's for the rest of Woodland Hills, that was what we're talking about.
Well, then, then it doesn't apply to Bob then. Then it does not apply to Bob.
Because I thought, I thought down.
Well, we did something special just for, for seasons.
They went to the property line.
Yeah, R-19, so.
So that's not this fence you're talking about now?
No.
This is, doesn't apply to the R-19s, it only applies to the rest of the whole city? Because we already.
It applies to the whole city. Have you really, Dr. Gage?
I don't know, because I thought we.
Did we only approve the last one for Robert for four seasons only?
It was R-119 without an overlay zone.
Without an overlay zone, okay.
Just Summit Creek has an overlay.
Right.
Coming down Summit Creek Drive.
Yeah.
You have to be thirty foot back.
Thin.
Can we have a forty-two inch fence?
Yeah.
We can have a forty-two inch fence along the property line, at the, the road.
Up to the plane. Up to the plane in the front.
But not on the property, on, not on butting a street? It can't be on the property line?
Because you can have forty-two inch fence if I'm in the street.
Who's on first?
Obstruction, but if it's a forty-two inch fence, it's in the upcoming path. So there's no restriction.
I just aged myself, but it's okay.
Well, I understand.
All right, so I, it seems to me that there is, uh, a need for some additional consideration on this, so I, I would like to table this. Um, Ben, did you have, uh, something you wanted to add?
Yeah, I think so. I think really for me, it comes down to, it makes perfect sense. I love this ordinance as is for the bulk of Woodland Hills, but it just needs to be different for, for seasons or any other areas that fall into that same kind of area. And I think having two distinct fence ordinances for their different regions makes perfect sense.
Okay, well.
They're different. They're not the same.
Yes.
All right, then I, I'd like to table this issue till the next council meeting and then we can get some information. Yeah, we shouldn't be voting on it.
We gotta, we gotta understand and people vote.
Yeah, all right. So let's move on then. Actually, by moving on, I mean, is there any, we kind of jumped ahead. So the acceptance of the annexation request for Kelly's Cove, does anybody have any further discussion about that?
Can I just say something last thing about the fences? So if we're going to have another discussion going forward, then the planning commission has given us this, this piece to, to, as they have amended it and recommended it. So are we asking them to clarify for us what this actually means for every section of the city? I mean, we've been asking a lot of questions and Wayne has been addressing those, but what are we asking for them to come back to us with? Otherwise, we're in the same boat next time.
Right, well, and, and as far as like a specific direction, uh, I was gonna leave it to each of you with respect to your personal questions, but I do think that that would be valuable, Wayne. I mean, do you feel like you can provide some clarification in that respect that, uh, I mean, and, and maybe you already feel you did provide it, but to the extent that there is additional clarification that needs to be made?
You talk about clarification considering applying to different parts of the city?
Mm-hmm, yeah. I think they should be different. I don't think they should be the same.
I agree.
But as it's written right now, it's across the board, right? I mean, so the clarification is that it applies to everybody in effect, but even still, I think that based on the discussion that we've had, I think that this merits further consideration before we vote on it, so.
Let me take this second with Wayne and clarification for me.
Well, yeah, I think that if you want to do that, uh. Well, I, I think we'll, we've decided to table it, so, but if it helps inform decisions going forward, then I think that that would be useful to have. Okay, Severin, yeah? Did you have something?
Yeah, um, just to add to what Wayne had to say. You know, the primary purpose for this in the beginning was the current fence ordinance requires a five-foot setback from the property line throughout Woodland Hills. Now, what that creates even in the upper part of Woodland Hills is then conceivably a ten-foot no man's land that nobody takes care of. And we wanted to re, we eliminate that. And that's why we said, "Put it on the property line." So you reduce that ten-foot no man's land.
I think though, that's, that, that we agree with that. It's the side by the road that we have the issue with.
Thirty-foot setback.
Which is only on the road.
Personally, I'm, I'm.
Once again, just like Wayne said, then change that. You've got the authority to change that and say, be on, be, behind the plane of the, front plane of the house, then the side yard can be, the fence can be on the property line and be over forty-two inches long. That's all you have to do.
Okay, thank you, Severin. All right. We, we, uh, ready to move on?
So we're talking about the acceptance of the annexation?
Yeah, so the acceptance of the annexation, let's just jump back.
That's just this part right here.
Yeah, this is.
About earlier.
Yeah, so.
Which already abuts current Woodland Hills property. And it's just county property that he wants to annex in those four, four or five lots.
Four, I believe. Uh, no, five.
Five lots that he wants to annex in.
That one does not bother me at all. And I really appreciate the, the approach that we're taking, which is, let's do it logically. If, you know, if the stuff needs to go to Payson, or, excuse me, to Elkridge, then let it be in Elkridge. If it needs to go to us, then let it be in Woodland Hills. I think that's a very logical approach.
Yeah, my understanding is that, uh, in the past though.
And I don't just mean the stuff, the roads, the whatever.
Right. My understanding is it's been, it's been a little sticky, uh, in, in past efforts to make that. I mean, so, you know, I think that everyone wants that. I hope that we can actually see it done.
And this, and just to clarify, this is just annexing the property, not to approve these lots or approve any development or anything else, although it was given to us as these were, were, um, part of a, a future development. We're not agreeing to that just for these five pieces of property to come in. And then another plan will have to be given to us on how those would be developed going forward.
Right, and, and as was mentioned by.
With roads, utilities, everything else in our standards.
And potentially some grandfathering in concerning certain observance of certain ordinances. Yeah, so that will all have to be separately, uh, addressed. Okay, anything else?
Nope.
All right.
Change your mayor?
He just took time to explain it to me the way he's explained it to me. I can't have a forty-inch fence along the road. I mean, down, on the Creek Drive, a forty-inch fence goes over the front of the house. I'm okay with what you've got here.
Okay, no, I'm glad. I, I don't know if that changes anybody else's. I mean, I think that we still want to table this for clarification. Yeah, but I'm glad that you guys have got that worked out. Okay, uh, so then, uh, item, uh, seven would be the recommendation to amend the city code, uh, 10-6 regarding the appeal officer. Um, I, one thing that I know that each of you received, uh, is, is the email with the, uh, concern from, from Tannen and Megan Fugia um, about, um, it's, it's not specifically addressing, um, uh, the appeals of, uh, the, uh, how did they put it? Let me pull it up quickly. But i, in any event, I, I spoke with the city attorney today. I spoke with Craig and, and Ethan. Um, and, and they suggested, they said that it, we, we are fine to move forward with the amendment of the ordinance as it's written, but it will necessitate us making some revisions to some additional parts of our code, just because we want consistency. Um, so in essence, what we're working toward is, um, basically, uh, so Tannen and Megan's concern was that, you know, there would not be left an appeal authority for certain types of decisions. And that is, we are working toward getting that addressed so that it is something where, you know, the ambiguity, I think, has absolutely lent itself to the confusion that we have, where you can have appeals running concurrently before different bodies over the same issue. And, and so this is to clean that up so that technical issues that are being appealed, uh, relating to the building code, they would be appealed to the I.B.C., I.R.C. board. And zoning decisions would be appealed to this new appeal authority. So it's going to require some modification of other, um, uh, of our ordinances to make it, uh, more unified. But that is the end objective, is to make sure that the appeal body is properly designated.
So, um, Wayne and I had a conversation right before and it was from, because I read the section in our code. And reading that section, so first of all, the site plan review, let's just talk about that for a second. The site plan review is actually in the title that is about zoning. And yet, there's nothing in the site plan review that applies or to zoning. It does apply to the enforcement of the zone, but that's different than changing zoning or changing, um, the, the rules around the type of zone that we have. The site plan review literally is all about making sure that when they build that house, when they, when they develop that site, that they are complying with our zoning ordinances. Which we definitely want to do and.
Setbacks, et cetera.
Setbacks, et cetera.
Yep.
So the, the proposal that I'd like to pass by Craig is, why don't we move that section that talks about the site plan review? Because if you literally look at the entire rest of the code in, in that title, it has nothing to do with the site plan. It's, it's about zoning, it's about creating a zone, creating set, you know, what are going to be the setbacks? What are, you know, all this stuff, which that needs to be in that section. But then we've got this kind of ugly stepchild in that title called the site plan review. Really, in my mind, that should be in, I believe it's Title IX, which is more around the building process and following the building codes and things like that. That makes more sense to me because the site plan review is about building. It's about getting the.
And setbacks, and setbacks.
And some lots have a building envelope that they need to make sure.
It is not about setbacks.
Well, you gotta follow them on your plan.
But it's about enforcing them.
Yeah, well, that's the plan.
Setting the setbacks is one thing, enforcing them is a different thing.
Yeah, but you gotta enforce it on the plan, don't you?
Totally. I totally agree with you, absolutely. But again, when you're talking law, you're talking about how you, um, how you organize it. And Title X, which is our zoning title, it's all about zoning, it's about creating a zone. It's about putting together, what is the zone going to look like? Are we going to ha, how big, how many square feet is it going to be? What are the setbacks going to be, et cetera, et cetera? That's creating a zone. Then you have building a home within a zone. And yes, we definitely need to enforce the setbacks, no question. We have to do that. I'm just saying that this site plan review should be part of the building a home, not a part of creating a zone.
Right, and well, and we also have to remember that some of our subdivisions, those lots that were plotted have a buildable envelope that we have to make sure that tho, those homes are inside that buildable in, envelope, which is then part of that site plan review, to make sure that they have come into compliance.
Yeah, there's, there's all kinds of things.
There's lots of little things like that.
That have to do with compliance versus creating a zone. You know, they're two different processes.
True.
They really are.
Well, I, I think that, that, the, the objective in all of this really is to just make sure that technical questions are addressed by a technical body and zoning questions, which are not technical, can be addressed by a laybody. And so that, uh, so to, to your point, Dave, I mean, if we need to amend the ordinance such that the site plan review falls under, you know, the jurisdiction of the I.R.C., I.B.C. as an example, because it's more of a technical nature.
So just a minute, because I, I, again, the nature of this is it's pretty technical and we want to get the words right.
Yeah.
Right.
But does the current, current ordinance address that?
I.R.C., I.B.C. is the codes around building the home.
Right.
Right.
They have nothing, not much, I should say, to do with the site plan review. Site plan review is something that we as Woodland Hills have said we need to do so that we are checking our site, our, uh, side setbacks, so that we're checking, you know, um, the, the building envelope and things like that. So here's the misconception, that Title IX is all about I.B.C., I.R.C., whatever, right? I think we can make it Title IX all about I.B.C., I.R.C., and then site plan review. And there would be three components of Title IX, not just the two.
I have a question. Are we currently, are we still talking about the appeal officer or have we moved on to the required drawings and information one?
I think that they're kind of mangling them.
And I want, I have some things to say about the, the drawings and information, but if we're still talking about appeals officer, I will hold off.
Well, here's the thing is, is in discussing this with Wayne, again, it seems like we're kicking the can down the road on pretty much every issue tonight, but we discussed that since the appeal authority, um, ordinance is going to have some farther, further-reaching implications that.
Besides just appeals.
Yeah, we, we need to make sure that, um, that, so this, uh, for, 10-4, 5D, we're not ready to move ahead with that amendment because the language will be conditional on the way we describe it in the appeal authority ordinance. So, but, but again, the ultimate objective is just to make sure that the correct, that one, that you, you, you aren't able to get two bites at the apple through, you know, a single, um, appealable issue uh, by filing the appeal before multiple bodies. And then two, to make sure that the proper body is hearing appeals of a certain type of decision.
Yeah, so Carrie, let me, let me explain why I'm bringing this up as possibly moving.
This might be the same reason that I want to bring it up.
To me, if I were a resident and I'm looking at our code and I'm seeing site plan review under the zoning title, and then I also saw that there was an appeal board, it would make sense that if I have problems with somebody's site plan, that I would go to that appeal board.
Yeah, and that's not their proper.
Except that's not where it really should be. And so that's why I'm like, you know, I tried, I tried to mentally go, okay, how, how did we get this mixed up? And it's because the way that our ordinance, our title is written, it seems like the appeal board's the right place to go if you have problems with somebody's site plan. But really, that's more of a building issue, not a zoning issue. So that's why I'm thinking, let's move that over to where building is. That way you know, hey, if you've got a problem with somebody's site plan, you go to that board, you don't go to this board.
Right. The other thing that I noticed as I was investigating things today, part of it was because during codification, we went, reverted back to some original language. And so we're having, I think we need to go forward with some clarification, Wayne, on, um, where we have, that inter, we have intermingled a lot of terms that may have seemed like they were the same thing, but are now confusing. Building official, building review official, building inspector, assigned review officers, we have that terminology. And, and I know right now, if we have our building official, which is Corbett, doing things, then that's on our city dime, et cetera, of, of, uh, part of his duties. If we have the outside contracted city inspector doing site plan reviews, then that, that is an additional fee that goes someplace else, right? And so I think we need to make sure that we are very clear to our residents on who actually is doing what. And we have several places through nine and 10 that intermingle those, but where it's not really clear who's doing the work. So I would suggest that we start looking at that as well.
Yeah, no, I agree. Corbett?
I think a couple of points to make is by code, by city code, you have to adopt the building code.
Yes.
And so the references in city code should only be references that you adopt the, the building code. The building code, meaning the state-adopted construction codes, are how you build what you build. City code dictates what you build. Is it a forty-two inch fence or a six-foot fence? Where is that fence located? Doesn't have anything to do with the state-adopted construction codes. If you're going to start messing with the state-adopted construction codes, you have to do that through the Uniform Building Codes Commission. And it is an expensive and lengthy process. Don't mess with it if you don't need to. Just by reference, adopt the building codes as adopted by the state of Utah, and we've done that. But there's, there's many places in our code where we get into the weeds and we shouldn't. We need to take that stuff out of our code and leave it in the state-adopted construction codes where. and leave it in the state adopted construction codes where it belongs, the way that it's been adopted by the state of Utah. It, it hasn't been adulterated by us. We need to stay away from it.
Is the site plan review as it's currently in Title X, is that covered in any way, shape, or form by the state adopted codes?
No.
So, that would be-
Again, this-
We need to have that.
You have, if you want something specific that is other than how you build the structure, you have to do that in ordinance, in city ordinance. Whether it's zoning or whatever, I, that I don't know. But if you're talking about what you, or how you build what you build, that's done in the state adopted construction codes. Stay away from it.
So, what I'm suggesting is really simple. Just take what's currently in Title X under the site plan review and move it to Title IX. That's it. That's all I'm suggesting.
Okay, well, and, and for another day though, right?
Right. Things that are associated with that, if that's, if that's the way we want to go, maybe one of the site plan review. For example, the building permit issuance is, is a result of that site plan review. We may want to look at that and see if that properly belongs in Title IX rather than Title X on zoning.
But, let me interrupt, sorry. But the, the building, the building permit is regulated under the state adopted construction codes. Now, if you want to add regulations to that, stay out of the, stay out of the construction codes and add your regulations as a stipulation that have to be met. But, but don't, don't start mixing the two together. Construction codes need to stay with the state adopted construction codes. City code can add to it, but it's, it adds to it only through city ordinance.
Yeah, so, just so that we're really clear on how the codification looks. You have a title. That's like a big, big bucket, think of it like a book. Then within the book, you have chapters. And each individual chapter covers different parts. So, part of our current Title IX, if you look at it, it's actually-
I've read them, I've read through them.
Basically, all we do is we say, we adopt the state building codes. That's all Title IX really says. And that's in Chapter One, Chapter Two, I think is, is all it is. All I'm suggesting is add a Chapter Three, and that's where you move the site plan review. And that's it.
Yeah, no, I, I, I think-
Clarifies-
What we're talking about, which part of the building process.
Easily, yeah, which part of the process are we talking about? And if there's a problem with that process, where do you go to appeal? Which I think that's, it is very important. And I think, you know, the fugues have a point. That it needs to be clear that they have an avenue if they need to appeal, or any citizen really. If they need to appeal, they need to have that, that avenue. But it needs to be clear and not kind of confusing like it is today.
And this whole appeal topic is what started this whole project with your good suggestion of not appealing to a committee, but to an attorney, which I really like. And I hope that we can move faster to get that in.
Me too.
Rather than, I see there's some spaghetti here along with it.
And that's, that's my concern is, because yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's not addressing every need that, that the ordinance, um, brings up. I mean, and so it's something that, I mean, we are going to have to eat this elephant a bite at a time. But I do think that by moving forward with this piece, and then to your point Dave and to Carrie's point, I, like, we need to start chipping away at some of the inconsistencies and to Corbett's point, making sure that we're not somehow muddying the water with respect to, you know, those, those ordinances that we are obliged to adopt and, and that we don't give what are potentially conflicting terms. But, but the thing that I would prefer to avoid is trying to do it all at once and waiting, and waiting, and waiting until we're all, everything's lined up.
Wait, you want to avoid codification?
Right, and I think, so, so do you feel that we can move forward in, in voting on this appeal officer, which we all agree with, without necessarily moving and clarifying who, what this appeal authority is over?
I wish we could do that.
And I asked Craig if we can, and, and as the city attorney, he said, we are fine doing that.
Okay.
So, that's to me, because I felt the same concern. I mean, it's like, I, I don't want to, you know, really screw up. But I think that his point is also that, you know, let's keep this thing moving forward and, and, you know.
So, maybe next time, we can have it on our agenda to move that over to the other section, to Section Nine, so that it's very clear on which part of the building process you appeal to. Because we don't want everybody coming to this appeal officer for a-
So, it may take a little longer than just next time.
Right, because it has to go through-
Because it's in Title X, it's a zoning issue, so it has to go through Planning Commission.
Yeah.
And public hearing, then public hearing here.
But we move forward at all deliberate speed. I think that, you know, it's something that, we just need to move it forward. Corbett, were you going to add to something?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's, that's the take that I've been given from our, our city legal counsel, that, you know, we don't have to have everything absolutely worked out, but we do need to be moving forward, addressing some of the potential conflicts that it might create.
I feel comfortable, go ahead.
Oh, is this okay for us to ask Planning Commission to look at the site plan review process and possibly moving that to Title IX?
Yeah, I mean, I, 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 by all means, I, I think that we can. I just, because it's not on the agenda, dude, can we still make that request?
You can make a request.
Okay, perfect, then let's make it. Wayne? Request made. Thanks. All right, any, any other discussion on that?
I was just gonna say, I feel comfortable with that as long as we all understand that, you know, there are all those other parts and that we need to work those out.
Yeah, no, and, and that really is a great-
And not drop the ball, is what I'm saying. We need to make sure we finish that, not just start it and drop the ball on it.
And, and Craig did say that he feels like it is a relatively modest, I mean, it's, it's not going to require a major overhaul. It's something that we should be able to do relatively simply.
Which, getting back to Carrie's point, when we did the codification, it was, it was a difficult process and it needed to be. But we kind of need to keep doing little bits and pieces of clarifying, again, roles, titles, definitions, that kind of thing. Just so, and, and honestly, we have. The Planning Commission has been doing that last six to eight months. And so, we've been cleaning things up as we've gone and it's getting better. In fact, it's almost time to do codification again, so.
And start with a whole new set of problems?
Yeah, shoot.
All right, um, so then, as I mentioned, Item Eight, we're tabling that because of the potential implications of amending the appeal officer. And then, proposed, Item Nine, Proposed ADU Application and Inspection, Inspection Checklist. Wayne?
We went back and you should have in your packet, a sample of-
The checklist.
Checklist. We pulled from the ordinance and things that were related to it to make sure that it got included on, on the list. So, that's our recommendation to you with a checklist that would be completed by whoever's doing the inspection of the, of the ADU. And again, just to reiterate, this is a one-time only to qualify for an AD, for an ADU. It would not be a ongoing inspection, similar to a, a home inspection, a new home inspection. Now, of course, if there's major renovations that are going to be made to that home, they're going to have to follow code, whatever that code is and, and requires. So, those kinds of things may be in addition to this. But this is a standard inspection for somebody who wants to make a minor adjustment to their living quarters to accommodate an ADU.
I had a question, because it says the structure is internal to the residence. I know of at least one property in our city that has a separate garage and has an apartment above that garage.
It's grand, I would think that those kind of places would be grandfathered.
But I'm just, does that qualify?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
So, here's the question, do they have a non-family member renting back?
No, it was like a married child. But I, but they could in the future rent it, so that's what I'm asking.
That would be considered to be a detached garage as part of the structure.
Okay.
So, uh, they, they can't build a separate rental unit. That's-
Right.
But right now, as long as it's owner occupied residence, if they have that apartment above the garage, I think that would be still considered-
It would qualify as an ADU.
My question is-
Now, then let me, let me add, if they take a detached garage and convert it to an ADU, then they have to build another garage to accommodate our city ordinances. So, just kind of keep that in mind. As part of the, it's kind of outside of this process, but it's still required for them to do that.
I think we should also be clear that if someone currently doesn't have like a mother-in-law's apartment, but they want to convert part of their home into an ADU, they would have to get the applicable building permits to do whatever the work is that needs to do to make this an apartment.
Correct.
At this point. And then this would be on, in addition to that, this does not cover a whole new permit. They would get the regular remodel permit. And then, then they would go for this part.
If they want an ADU to be considered an, an approved ADU in the city, then they have to meet this checklist requirement.
Hey, any other?
And is this, this application and this check for completeness, who would be the one that approves and goes through and makes sure this is okay? Would this be through, because it's safety, it would have a fire safety component that the chief would go through, or a building inspector type component that, um, that Corbett would go through?
Probably both.
So, they would both probably have, we'd have to have a line for both of them to check off, so that it was safety compliant as well as building inspector compliant.
Yes.
You do?
Oh, I want to. I would not charge them 300 bucks either. But I do have a question, Craig. Are you comfortable with everything on the checklist and, and the fee associated and so on?
I mean, yeah, if you, if you look through those ordinances, they're all safety ordinances. Smoke alarms.
They're all basic.
Escape routes. You can't, the resident has to be joined, it can't be separated by a locked door. So, all those are for fire safety. And so, it's, it's, it's pretty simple stuff. Handrails, that kind of stuff, make sure that it's really just, yeah, they're safety devices. So, I really don't have a problem with this. I mean, I don't think we're going to get inundated with tons of inspections. I'll bet you it's going to be very few. And, you know, the fee is for all the paperwork we got to do and the inspection stuff. So, I mean, I, because it's safety related, I really don't have a problem with it. And I don't think most people will either when they put it in an application.
How many of these do you estimate doing over the next year?
I'd be surprised if there was 10.
Yeah, I would be too.
I mean, I, I would really be surprised.
I'm thinking like three to five.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm just not thinking there's going to be a lot.
Well, there's a difference in my mind, there's who doing it now.
Well, even at 10.
And new ones. I would suggest-
It would be one a month.
I would suggest who's doing it now, there'll be zero. But I've already said my piece on it, but. And then I've talked, I've, I've, just for the council's benefit, I've, I've visited with other entities in governing expertise. They think our fee's a little steep and and they, they listen to my concerns. And there is some agreement, as you pointed out, but I, I know these safety issues are important. But I, I still have, as you know, I'll be quiet, but I have jitters over this.
And we did ours based on surrounding communities' fees. So, this is, this seems to be the standard of what the fees are of the cities that are in our area. And we do have to pay for these two to go and do the inspection, so we don't want to do that.
And process the paperwork.
You should only charge a fee as to what it costs the city. And, and I think you have to learn that in this situation, in my opinion, before you figure out what a fee is. But it may take 10 minutes and it may take 10 hours, you know, in some situations where you have to repeat inspect and, you know, handle other issues. But this, as a citizen, I find this very disturbing and, and difficult to police, if you want to police it, because deciding what a rental is, is your first problem. And, and that to me is as cloudy as cloudy can be.
But it's voluntary.
Or if it's family.
Voluntary, it's voluntary.
Yes, okay, then, if you're not going to enforce it, if it's not voluntary-
Well, it's an ordinance, I mean, if there's a complaint from a neighbor, it would have to be investigated, right?
By them.
And it's not voluntary.
Yeah, well, and, and I've said before, I, I mean, we can't be afraid to enforce our ordinances.
No, but this is something new that, that affects existing situations.
Well, we've only had a rule-
And you've grandfathered in other things, you know, so.
But we've only, we've never had a rule that says you can rent to a non-family member. That's never been an ordinance in our entire city.
You should have never known, you should have never known. If you approve a mother-in-law apartment and someone starts, not just mother-in-law, but renting, you've never known that legitimately.
As elected officials, we enforce-
I gotta be quiet, I don't want to take any more time than this.
And, 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 you know, we appreciate your, uh, your, your input, Doral.
So, why can't you charge a deposit and refund the balance? I mean, that's what we do now with the building permit.
I like it.
We do it now with the building permit, we, we charge them $5,000. If you have reinspection fees, you don't have to pay every single one of them every time it happens. We take it out of your deposit and we refund the balance.
I love it. Because you know how much, you know, it's going to take you in.
Yeah, but the, the issue is that-
And I do want to cover our costs.
But too many times, they expect, I mean, as a building inspector, too many times they expect me to be their engineer. They expect me to be their contractor. And, and they want me to tell them what they got to do just to pass inspection. Well, that's not your job.
Right.
You know, and, and so, you can have multiple inspections. And if you don't have a way to cover that upfront, you're not going to get that money out of them on the back end.
It's true.
Just give it back if you don't use it.
So, would that necessitate a change to the checklist? Uh, if we held it in escrow or held it in trust, or are we? I mean, I'm, I'm just curious if-
Well, the amount isn't on the checklist per se, it's more on the-
It's on the form.
On the form.
I don't either.
How we held the money?
Neither the form nor the checklist are-
Right. Right, right. And I think we approved the form. It's just an understanding, because if somebody already meets all these, if somebody has everything on the checklist, these guys come in, do an inspection, boom, it's good.
10 bucks, done.
Yeah, it's going to be a lot smaller fee than if they have to go back three or four times, right?
Okay, well, so I, I'm just wanting to see if we can move this forward, because we are voting on its acceptance, it's not an ordinance, but we are voting on it, so.
I'm good with it.
Because I, I think that, uh,
With that provision.
The idea of, of not it being a fee, but as more of a deposit, I, I like that idea too.
I do too.
So, as long as we can do that and still forge ahead with this, then.
It's smart.
I think the checklist looks great. Mostly, I just want to say thank you, Wayne, for putting this together.
It's very, it's really basic too, there's not anything extra on there. So, I don't feel like you're putting anybody through like anything extreme. It's very basic.
So, what were you saying, Jody?
On the application right now, it says $300. Do we change that, say?
Deposit.
Dollars with the unused portion being refunded?
Or just put the word deposit?
I would use deposit and nothing else. Because he needs the ability to charge that full amount if it takes-
And what if it goes over that? Because there could be people who say, of course I want to rent, and then they're not really in. I mean, they should get this application first and make sure that all their ducks are in order, but we know that a lot of people like to use Corbett as their free building.
We're not etching this in stone. If it doesn't work down the road, we'll change it.
Yeah, and the other thing you could just add is, um, plus possible reinspection fees.
But I like the word deposit, because then you're not setting the expectation that they're going to get any money back.
Right.
They could possibly.
Right.
That, I, that's just me.
All right, any further discussion on that? Okay, Item 10, increase in water system level of service for fire protection. Ted, not here, but-
That may be for Corbett.
Oh, Ted, okay.
Uh.
That's actually mine. Mayor. Hello.
We're back to you, Ted.
I think Craig's going to start off with this, Mayor.
Okay.
That's actually mine.
All right, perfect.
Um, so what we currently have, the water level of service is currently set at 1,500 gallons for two minutes. And that's what a fire hydrant has to flow, um, for two hours. Oh, so the, um, due to the increase in our water supply, the system that we just put in, we are capable now of flowing over 3,000 gallons for three hours. So the old, the old one was 1,500 for two hours, and that was a minimum that is set typically by the fire department. Uh, we can't go over what, if we can't supply it to the person, you can't demand they have it. Now that we can supply the 3,000 gallons, we would like to move it to 3,000 gallons for three hours for fire suppression. And if you think about, if we have a wildfire vent up here or a structured fire, one of my engines can pump 1,200 gallons a minute. So if we're, if we're doing a wildland fire, we could be, we could be out of water pretty quick. And it's for a home up to 3,600 square feet.
So, Craig, what does this change mean? I mean, other than just setting, is it kind of like setting a goal, saying, we want to have 3,000 gallons for three hours? But, or does it involve changes to pumps, pipes, indoor structure? I mean, what does it mean?
So being that we did just change to eight-inch pipe, that's what allowed us to flow more. There's some places it flows 6,000 gallons a minute in the city. But once we finish out the build with the other water, everywhere in the city, we'll be able to provide 3,000 gallons a minute. Um, what it does is it helps with our impact fees. And we are setting the impact fees right now for the future and the build out. And now would be the time to do it, uh, to get the most out of that. Uh, with Ted and, Ted and Chris are working on the impact fees now. Uh, so it's, I mean, it's 1,500 gallons a minute for two hours is not much water. And if you think about what could happen up here and we run out of water while we're trying to fight something, I mean, that's, we shouldn't do that now. We should, it's time to up it because we can.
And maybe David, I can address your comment from the impact fee side? Kind of what this means for the city? The, like Craig said, the 3,000 gallons a minute for three hours is a couple of things. Um, when we do an impact fee analysis, we have to do a facilities planning. And the state requires that you have so much storage available in your water tank for fire flow. And at the current code of 1,500 gallons a minute for two hours, that's 180,000 gallons that we have to keep in, to fire our water tank for fire storage. And then on top of that is our operational storage. Um, of course, with all the bigger homes we're getting now in the city, that's, you know, that, that's quickly getting outdated. So by going to 3,000 gallons a minute for three hours, it's now, we have to have 540,000 gallons of fire storage in our tank. And then on top of that, operational storage. What that means is that we can now, it, it's going to increase the amount of time, or should, well, no, decrease the amount of time before we're going to need some more storage. So when we do an impact fee analysis, we can set that new fire requirement as our city's level of service, is what we call it. And for developers, when they develop, we have to be able to do whatever it takes in our city to maintain that level of service that we established. So that requires more storage. We can now include that in an impact fee charge to a developer for more storage. Same with a, when a developer builds his water system, because our water systems are typically built by the developers when they develop, we can ask them for their water system model or their water system design. We can plug in our model and verify that they can supply that water. If they can't, then we can ask them to upsize their pipes, for example, or what it takes to provide that flow. So really what it means, it's a, it's a benefit to the city, both on the impact fee side and just making sure we have adequate infrastructure that's being built by developers to supply this level of service that we really need for these bigger homes.
Okay, that's very helpful. One other question, Ted, or maybe Corbett. So we had the Maple Canyon well and we had tanks there, uh, which we no longer have, I don't think, or.
We still do.
Are they still there? So when we talk about this storage, if, let's do a hypothetical. If we built a brand-new tank by the Maple Canyon well, does that, um, count towards this storage requirement? Or because that's only mid-city, does it only count towards half the city's storage requirement?
It would only, I mean, wherever you built it, it would only count for the area that it serves.
Okay.
You know, but I mean, all that, so do you count the Maple Canyon tank in the whole city? No, but then you don't take the upper tanks and count the lower part of the city in the upper tanks because that's served by Maple Canyon. You just have to meet that minimum requirement everywhere in your system. However you get it there is up to you. But are you talking about building a tank at the Maple Canyon well or at the new Broad Hollow well at the top of town?
Well, so.
I mean, Maple Canyon is in Salem, right?
Yeah, that's on Salem's property.
Was our current, was the tank that we had there on Salem's property?
Yeah, it's a shared tank between us and Salem.
Oh, awesome. Actually, what the genesis of my question was is, do we also need to be thinking about buying more property or getting more property so that we could build a second tank?
You got enough, you got enough property at the top if that's where you want to put it.
Okay.
Again, when you're talking about doing this, the developer has to maintain that fire flow throughout his development. Now, sometimes that's upsizing the pipe. Sometimes it's shortening the distance between the storage and the home that you're, that you're looking at, or the fire hydrant. I mean, is the way that you design a model. And so wherever in the system it, it works the best, which means if the developer's footing the bill for it, he's going to do what's most economical for him. And that's generally what's most economical for the city too.
So I have a question. So Craig, well, you were saying the 3,000 gallons per minute for three hours. Is that what we currently have or that's what we're trying to get to?
That's what we would like to set our level of service at.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
And that actually goes up to an 11,000 square foot home, which we have larger ones, but we do get some credit for being sprinkled. But you also take some of that credit away for being in the oak. So if you have a chance of group fires, they call them, like multiple, multiple residents on fire, that's a good reason to up it. And it's, it's, Ted's run the numbers with his modeling and stuff and it's, it's, it's justifiable. So we're not just reaching out and coming up with a number. It was, uh, it was thought through and, and so.
So just to make sure that I'm clear on the purpose of this topic even coming up. So the, the objective is that we are going to be, dot, 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 as this body is concerned.
We're going to be changing the two ordinances in the, one in the, the construction standards and in public safety under hydrants. And we'll just be changing the numbers from 1,500 gallons for two hours to 3,000 gallons for three hours. But we have to hold, we'll hold a public meeting. Just wanted to give the heads up.
And, and the other benefit, Mayor, is we're doing a capital facilities plan and possibly going to reevaluate on our water impact fees right now. Um, I think Chris may be talking to you about that, but, um, if, if by the city changing the level of service to meet this new level of service, that impacts our capital facilities plan because it could say that we need, you know, rather than new water storage in 10 years, maybe we need it in five years. And by impact fee law, any improvements that are needed within the next six years, we can include in impact fee to developers.
So as this goes, though, we would need to get this ordinance changed and then based on that need, we could then adjust the impact fees, right? That, that's, that's the sequence, sequence that it would have to follow.
Yeah, yeah, and we just completed the capital facilities plan. We've left it in draft form until we can get through this discussion. And then if so, because this, this capital facilities plan sets the level of service that the city establishes. So if we need to change that, now's the time to do it before we, before we move into the impact fee analysis.
Okay, thank you. All right, Wayne, did you have your hand up?
I was just going to say, it requires an ordinance change. It is going forward.
Okay, yeah, and I know that we have been discussing, uh, adjusting the impact fees as Ted mentioned. So I just wanted to make sure I was clear on the ordering of events. All right, um, any, any other? Any other discussion on that? Okay. Um, planning commission update. Wayne, Chairman Franson.
We've, uh, I've made a, a further request of Summit Creek to provide some additional information, uh, to the city on the, uh, exchange possibly of, uh, part of, a portion of our roads in exchange for them picking up some of the costs for infrastructure work. And so they're working on those additional figures to help us do a, a better analysis of that. There's a, a number of items also. I've asked our city attorneys to, um, to give us an update on, uh, some suggested changes outside of that particular issue to the development agreement. So, um, they have that to, to provide back to us to try to keep that moving along so, uh, we can address the things that we, we can address now and then work on the other things that we can't. So that, that's the only update that I wanted to, to share with you on the development agreement.
Thanks, Wayne, and thanks for your tireless efforts on, uh, that development agreement. Okay, um, Utah County Sheriff report, deputy?
Okay, I'm just going to give you kind of, uh, the numbers for the month of January. And I was talking to Carrie and I, I will, the first Monday of every month, I'll submit the numbers of the previous month and that will go in the newsletter. And then I'll, I'll put some type of safety reminder of, from driving to whatever holidays are coming up, just, um, from the sheriff's office. So just real quick, we had, uh, 53 details that we responded to in Woodland Hills in the month of January. Um, some of those, like we had three abandoned 911 calls, six medical calls, um, five citizen contacts, uh, one civil problem, uh, 20 extra patrols, two fire alarms, um, a couple of calls on, uh, information, just citizens calling in regarding, uh, questions on a case. Um, one theft, one threatening suicide, um, a couple of traffic stops, uh, a violation, a protective order violation and, uh, some wealth checks. So that's kind of our.
What was the theft?
I'd have to go back and look and see what that was regarding.
Yeah, if it was like a car break-in or curious to know. Yeah, I'd be curious to know that one.
Okay. Give a little synopsis on what those are. Usually if it's a vehicle, uh, burglary, it'll say that. So theft would, usually it's going to be an item that was stolen from the property itself.
Okay.
So.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you, deputy.
Okay, you're welcome.
Okay, uh, city council reports. Councilmember Hilliard, you still with us?
Yes, I am. Um, I've kind of assigned everything though out to those there.
Okay. Who is Ben's proxy?
Me.
Okay.
So we'll do it on my turn.
All right. Uh, councilmember Kinnaston, public safety.
Chief Northup, do you have anything specific to public safety to talk about? Yeah, good advice.
Don't park on the roads.
And, and choose an uphill. Yeah. And. Yeah.
All good points.
And I just want to, uh, point out to the council, we all got a little brown envelope. Last meeting.
From Libertas.
From the Libertas group.
Libertas is.
Libertas, thank you. I, I sat down, what's this like? And I read the whole thing and loved it, mostly because it reflects my opinions. But, but you will find, you will find value in that little booklet. And, um, I mean, it, it's talked about, just like we've talked tonight, what are fees? What are taxes? What, what's the right way to, to govern? And, and I really encourage you to get to read it. It, it's worthwhile and, and you'll learn something from it. And, and I, I took some of my thoughts and I emailed the, the address given to us with that letter. And he's already responded back and, and it's very, it's a very worthwhile organization. So just for what it's worth, I wanted to share that with you.
Thank you.
That's all.
Yeah, no, I, and I, I can't, I don't think we can emphasize enough the importance of training too in, in what we're doing.
Right.
That, uh, you know, in, in a variety of capacities.
Well, it just, it just gives you sympathy for the people whom you govern.
Yeah.
You know, we, we, we need to do just enough government, government, as I think we do, to, so to, to be correct and not overburden some. But anyway, it's very well-written and put together and easy read even for my simple mind, so.
Thank you. All right, councilmember Lund.
Um, okay, so I have a couple of them. So for the events, we put in the newsletter.
Did you like that today?
I saw that, I liked it. Um, just kind of a call for citizens who are willing to volunteer. We have a lot of people that say, I want to volunteer and no one ever asks me. So we're kind of asking them who wants to volunteer. We could run that for a few weeks, two or three weeks.
For a while. We did, what we did is a link and they can check which of the current city, um, events we have that they would like to volunteer on. And then we gave a, a separate other that they can actually type in if they feel that we need another event that they would incur, you know, that they would like to help form. And so, and then it comes to Janet and she can then, we've, um, captured their contact information so that she can call them directly.
And speaking of that, um, councilmember Hilliard, he had a suggestion to have like a game night. And I didn't forget about it, I just have kind of waited, but maybe once a month at the city center where people could come and, and I just don't know, I don't know, like I think some people would love it. I don't know how well it would go over, who would be over it. It sounds like extra work to me, but it could be really fun.
I put it forth to a couple of people who were wondering, okay, is this like adult board games and more, more strategic competition kind of things? Or would it be kids' nights? Would we have separate type of things? Because some people are really into those strategic competition games and, and.
Yeah.
You know, not everybody is. Other people want to come and have a good time and others might say, oh, for family night, we'd love to have all kid games, right? So I think that would be, if, if Ben wants to pursue that, he would have to come up with all of the logistics. And then we could advertise it and see if anyone wants it.
I think it could be really fun, but it, it just sounds like more work to me. I'm just saying.
So I have somebody who's willing to chair that.
Oh.
Um, if they want. Um, I've also got, um, games to meet every single need Carrie just addressed there.
I've seen all of those games.
So, yes, we've got lots of different options there. So I think.
So we're going to create a subcommittee and you're in charge of it.
That sounds like a plan.
Okay, um, and then as for Woodland Hills Days, um, I've talked to, uh, Bishop and Mary Ann Christiansen. Seems weird to call him that. Um, but anyway, we're, I'm going to meet with them tomorrow night. We're just going to kind of talk. They're going to stay on the committee. They will physically be out of town during Woodland Hills Days, but they're still going to help plan and oversee.
And if you need any other information, since I did it like for 10 years, I gave them most of the information they have. They pick, they, they chose to do some of the things from the past and not others because of the time constraints and the financial constraints.
Yeah.
So if you'd like to have any of that information of contact people, I have those as well.
And I think maybe I'll talk to you privately too and we can talk about maybe what we didn't do this last year that we'd like to add back in. So I, I won't take time here to do that. So, um, so that's that. So we're working on events. And then for PTR, um, there was a proposal for parking on Deep Forest. Do, did planning and zoning, did, did you get that? Follow-up? Yeah, she did a map and, um.
I did see the map.
And we were talking about it, helping with the snow plowing situation and cars because it was organized, the plows. it was organized, the plows could get in there.
Yeah, and what I'll have to do is I'll have to go up and see what what is left of the circle after these parking lots are spoken for, make sure we have a legal turnaround. And they did have the prices on it, so if that's if that's something we move forward with, we could put it in the budget for next year. And I I that's how I was taking it, right?
Yeah, I think with the current construction that we have on that circle, we'd for sure have to wait till that was all done, right?
Yeah, yeah, but I'll I'll go up, and we'll see, once the snow's out of that cul-de-sac, I can measure it and just see what it's, make sure it leaves us a legal turnaround.
Okay, they just wanted to make sure it hadn't been forgotten about, so.
Yeah, no.
Okay. The other question was the park, I think we talked about it once, but can we, the hours for the park, like say till eleven P. M., can we change that on the sign to ten P. M.? Because that's what the.
What time?
Ten P. M., isn't that what the curfew is in the in the city? For the park, but yet the park city hours say till eleven. So they wanted us to make a change.
I don't know why it said eleven. Wouldn't that curfew on, well, weekends is midnight, right? And maybe that's maybe that's why.
Yeah, we might have done it because our deputy here can enforce county law.
My sprinklers start, my sprinklers start just after eleven.
And and it was it was asked because, you know, of neighbors, people that live around the park are quiet, right? So it's not so noisy or whatever, but it's probably not super noisy.
Yeah, that's up to you guys if you if you want to change it.
They're all making out at that time. It's not that.
Oh.
Their main point was aligning basically the sound ordinances with the, I don't know if we were necessarily going off the curfew as much as we were just the the noise ordinance aligned with the park hours.
Because our noise ordinance says ten, but account, but the county.
Well, if you're walking your dog or.
Ones that are county ordinance, which isn't one.
Yeah, that makes sense. And then the other thing was, I'm that just having, I kind of volunteered to look for some grants, and we talked about doing basketball court and pickleball courts at the park. I know that's been thrown around for a while. We when we were talking about it, somebody said, oh, and lights, and and then, you know, we said no lights. So we think no lights, and and that will help with not having raucous groups there late at night, so you've got to have daylight. That way also you're not having any, you know, you don't want any big bright spotlight shining into neighbors' properties and things like that. So I think we're, you know, if if we add these things, we need to be really conscientious of our neighbors to the park.
And pickleball courts cost a fortune, so we would definitely need a grant, because I don't think we would want to put that bill, because I we looked into it, some other cities, and I was talking with other cities who have been trying to put them in, and they are very, very expensive.
Yeah, like, I mean, sixty.
Yeah, sixty thousand and just to get one.
Yeah.
And most cities have more than that, and they're full all the time, so we might not want to have fighting over our one, but we don't have a lot of space to take up, because I don't think our residents would want our park totally paved by these.
But you could do, you could do a combo, you could do basketball and pickleball all on the same, like with a sports court.
I think it would be really difficult, because the pickleball people will take it over, and the basketball people would feel slighted. Just my opinion on the people who are serious pickleball players, they they're not doing it just for recreation, it's competition.
Well, then maybe we're just getting a basketball court, because I'm partial to those.
My two cents on that, if we can, using tax income to build that.
Yeah, we wouldn't. Well, that's, yeah, that's what I'm doing.
Well, and I think that one of the things that we should consider moving forward, which other cities have, is a parking wreck tax, it's just specifically goes to tax, but it would have to be put on the ballot, and that's one of those things that has to be put on the ballot, and residents have to approve it, and then it's dedicated funds for trails, parks, whatever. And if they vote no, then we can say to our residents who want all these extras, I'm so sorry, but the city had voted no. And if they vote yes, then we can go forward in in whatever, but that's what a lot of cities have done with regards to the recreation, because people like outdoor recreation, but we, as a city, are looking at roads, snowplow, fire protection, those are our main concerns, not not having fun, not that we don't want to have fun, but we shouldn't come out of our general fund.
In that example, I wouldn't tax the minority either, that's fully against it, if we lose, you know, so if a citizen's voted toward the yes, then you're taxing everybody, I would not.
Well, that's a discussion that we should have in the future.
Okay.
But just an idea on, as we talk with other cities cities who are going through the same type of of ideas of, oh, we want to have a paved trail system that's maintained, and it's all this, so we don't want to take away from our necessary services to provide those services.
Right, and that's why I'm researching for grants.
A grant may pay for it, but it doesn't pay for maintenance going forward.
Right.
And there's also a match requirement, although I know it can be in kind, usually in in most grants that I've seen.
If we had service hours and things donated.
Yeah.
We can do the in-kind. Anyway, just looking into it, nothing nothing done, Dale, just doing some research, so.
Yeah.
That's it.
Thank you. Okay, councilmember Malkovich.
Yes, for our communication, we're still putting out the newsletter every Tuesday. We get a lot of great feedback from people, and I've decided not to require each of you to put something in, because we don't want just fluffy whatever, just because you feel like you have to put it in. But to remind you that our deadline is Monday by five P. M., if you do have something that you would like to put in, like a write-up about the safety expo, or if there's, you know, once the water construction begins again, or something with parks and trails, or whatever mayor put in something last week, just to give you the opportunity to put something in, any Monday, five P. M., send it over. With that, we are also looking at doing a more comprehensive communication plan, and we are going to be meeting with the mayor soon to go over what that entails and how we might be more effective effective and efficient in some of our city communication, and also blending some of our sources right now to make sure that we're consistent on all platforms. And then the other thing is just a little legislative update. There's three bills that I want to just tell you about. HB two ninety-three is the ground ambulance inner facility transport, that's something that the Fire Chiefs Association has been working on, so I've been working with Craig and Rachel on that to see if it affects our city much, and they've both given me their input. Basically, it was defining terms of ground ambulance or paramedic services with regards to geographic service area. And right now, it doesn't appear that the bill, as it's currently written, affects our city too much, so we're we're good to go on that one. We have HB two thirty-two, which is the Utah Lake Authority, don't confuse that with all of the talk of the of of the restoration project, has nothing to do with that, this is just coming up with a authority that then has the ability in all cities in the county will have eventually have a chance to serve on that, but it's just a way for the legislature to have dedicated funding for preservation of the lake and making sure as those cities that run the lake have a voice in how it's developed on the boundaries, not in the lake. And then the last one, which I think we need to keep an eye on, as a league member, we oppose this bill strongly, it's property rights and buzman amendment, and it was put out recently, and it bill makes provisions for the governing the Office of Property Rights and Buzman to annually review our local government ordinances, policies, and actions, and allows a person to file a request with that office for advisory opinion regarding condemnation actions, and allows them to request that the Office of the Advisory Opinion be determined if the local government or since policies are in compliance with state law, and then also authorizes court fees to the local government. So as a league and as a city.
You have a number on that one?
Uh-huh, that is House Bill four sixteen, so we are now working at actively to oppose this bill and have let our local legislators know that this is not something that that we feel is appropriate for municipal government. So that's my report.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Pratt.
So we haven't had our public works meeting yet, and it's next week, although Mark's looking at canceling that, because there doesn't seem to be a whole lot of topic. I did tell him to talk to you and make sure you didn't have any topics that needed to be discussed. And then Finance Committee, our meeting's tomorrow night, so they're in the process of working with departments to get the budget numbers put together, and and hopefully that'll be ready for the retreat.
Okay, perfect. And and I believe that everyone saw the email from Chris.
March fourteenth.
Oh, did we settle on a date? I just know that I cast my two votes.
It popped in that there was a date.
I told them, out of all of those, I only had one day I was in town.
March fourteenth is the winner right now.
Yep.
Okay.
Sure. Good, okay, I'm in town.
Okay, then you'll get you'll get some money, I guess.
This is the budget retreat we had scheduled for the first that now we are moving, because I had it scheduled originally on the first, but now we're moving it to the fourteenth.
Yeah.
Is the time still six o'clock?
I don't know if we've hammered out a time, but maybe we did. Yeah, you did, you said in your email, Chris, six, it starts at six P. M. at the.
I always propose that time, but another time is better than.
Good to go. Am I bringing pizza?
Something yummy.
All right, and then for me, personnel, I mean, I don't have anything to report other than I just, we've got a very talented group of city employees that contribute a lot, and so working with them, I am ever more appreciative of them, so. Possible items for upcoming city council agendas. Anybody have any thoughts or ideas that they want to bring up at the moment?
No, I just have some for the Finance Committee.
Some ideas?
No, just requests for extra money, little bit for Woodland Hills Days, just a little bit more in the budget.
Well, that's what we can talk about at our budget retreat.
We kind of cut the budget for Woodland Hills Days along with a few other things.
These are the kinds of things we talk about at the budget retreat.
Yay.
Which all of us will have something that we think needs to be either added or taken away.
I know. Have to get some donations then.
Yeah, it's. There's a way.
It is, yeah, when you actually get into the budget, you realize just how constrained our budget is and how, and it's not just about being constrained, it's, there are very few categories that have any flexibility. And so, you know, it's not about robbing Peter to pay Paul, it's literally, there's, you know.
No, absolutely, there's some things that just have to be paid for. Yeah, I get it.
So.
I actually work with budgets quite a bit.
All right, well, so let's close the work session, and I mean, we've been at this for an hour and a half. Anybody feel the need for a break, or we just forge ahead if everyone's okay?
Maybe get a small one.
I want a break, because my cord isn't working, and my phone is dead.
Okay, can can we reconvene at eight twelve?
Yes. I just have to run and grab a.
That is precise.
It's really precise. And they just changed to eight oh seven, so you get exactly five.
Oh.
Set my stopwatch.
Okay, you want to talk after? We're in favor. We've exchanged. So you're going to sponsor, so.
There you go.
All right, why don't we call the meeting to order?
Talk to them all. Yeah.
All right.
What time are we coming back?
Three minutes ago.
Carrie's talking to me in the hall, it's her fault.
I'm not a hardliner, but let's.
It's eight sixteen.
We made it, we're here.
Yeah, now we're 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 right where we need to be.
We just have councilmember and councilmember next to pledging invocation.
I I thought that we had the assignment, so.
No, we do.
I'm doing the pledge.
Oh, I was doing the prayer.
Oh, my my agenda doesn't have anybody on it.
I I thought it was on one of the.
So who is it?
I read it, I read it.
You're on the.
Prayer.
You're the prayer.
And I'm the pledge.
She's the pledge, I saw it somewhere.
I saw it too.
Okay.
I can pretend like I didn't.
You guys keep using the paper one, you gotta go to the online one.
This is the one that was on our desk.
Because Janet and I re-read the agenda.
So I just used the one that was.
Look, I printed the packet.
Oh, wow.
And I highlight it, and I go through it.
You killed trees.
Yes, that's what I do for a living, and I researched it stuff today.
Okay, can we have order while we?
Oh, it's on my online one that shows.
Okay.
They're back to me, I can't see who's over there talking.
It's Robert and Craig.
Oh, Craig, Robert, can we?
Troublemakers.
Yeah, we're gonna bring this meeting to order. So we're gonna have a pledge led by councilmember Lund, and then invocation by councilmember Kinniston.
I'll rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father in heaven, we are grateful this evening to meet as a city council. We are grateful for those citizens in our community that assist with all of our city goals and attempts to make this better, a better a better place to live. We are thankful for each of those in our city that contribute their time and talents to all of the things it takes to run this city. We are grateful to live in this beautiful place with all that surrounds us, neighbors and all of nature that we enjoy. We are grateful for our mayor donating his time to us, and we ask a blessing on him and members of this council to do what is best for our city. We are thankful for this opportunity, and we say and ask these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Thank you, Doral. Okay, so the first item is the consent agenda, January. Public comment.
Comment is first.
Oh, no.
On this agenda it is, but on the other public comment comes first on the online agenda, which was sent to our residents.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so public comments, limited to two minutes or less, and I will repent and try to make a better effort at observing that. As has been noted, comments submitted via email need to be received prior to three P. M. to be included as part of the official record. Emailed comments will not be read aloud during the meeting, but will be distributed to the council and included in the official record. So do we have any here that would care to make a comment?
I think they sign in, so Jody, no.
None, okay, and any over Zoom, Jody? Okay, very good. Now can I move on to the consent agenda?
No.
We have a break.
January eighteen, twenty twenty-two, special city council minutes. We'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll second.
Okay, councilmember Pratt makes the motion, councilmember Malkovich seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I think Ben has to show his face to vote.
Oh, yeah, Carrie did mention that, Ben, let's see you smile.
Perfect. Aye.
Okay. All right, the ayes have it. Business and discussions. Resolution twenty twenty-two ten, acceptance of annexation request for Kelly's Cove. I'll entertain a motion to.
I move that we accept that resolution.
I'll make a second.
Okay, the motion made by councilmember Kinniston and seconded by councilmember Lund, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? I think that was unanimous, I didn't need to ask. Okay.
Corbett has his hand up.
Uh, yes.
Jody found that 2010, uh, annexation agreement between the Hillview Bridge, and all of this property is in what the bill is according to that.
Oh, perfect, okay. Well, that makes it easy. Okay, thank you. All right, uh, item 17, resolution 202211, appointing councilmember Hilliard to the nine, uh, 911 special services, special service district board.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, so councilmember, uh, Malkovich moves and councilmember Pratt seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, item 18, uh, we are tabling. Item 19, ordinance 2022-06, amending the city code 10-6 regarding the appeal authority. A motion, uh, by councilmember Pratt.
I'll second.
And a second by councilmember Malkovich. Um, this, uh, will require a roll call vote. Councilmember Malkovich.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Councilmember Kinniston.
Yes.
Councilmember Lunt.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilliard.
Yes.
Motion carried. And item 20, uh, ordinance 2022-7, amending the city code 10-45D regarding required drawings information, also tabled. Item 21, policy and procedures, 2022-1, acceptance of ADU application and inspection checklist.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, councilmember Lunt, uh, makes the motion and councilmember Malkovich seconds. Um, and this is also a roll call, uh, councilmember Malkovich.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Councilmember Kinniston.
Yes.
Councilmember Lunt.
Yes.
And councilmember Hilliard.
Yes.
Motion carried. Okay, um, so now I would, uh, entertain a motion to enter a closed session, um, to discuss, uh, pending legal, uh, matters.
Some second.
Okay, councilmember Pratt moves and councilmember Malkovich seconds. Um, we'll do a roll call vote, councilmember Malkovich.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt. Councilmember Kinniston.
Yes.
Councilmember Lunt.
Yes.
And councilmember, member Hilliard.
Yes.
Motion carried. Okay, uh, this is now, we're now entering into a closed session. So, um, we would excuse those. Okay, so we are now back reconvening the city council meeting. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Councilmember Pratt, motion to adjourn, seconded by councilmember Kinniston. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
See you in the morning.
See you, Chris.